I'm sorry, I'm like everywhere. I'm everywhere. How are you? My hands are cold, sorry about that.
Get my stitches on Wednesday.
You just arrowed if you gotta go back or the front. Yep, you're good. You're welcome.
You know, I think we all have pieces up there. I pretty much knew it, but you laid it out.
Time is 5:28. Microphones all live.
We'll see. Okay, alright, cool. Okay, alright. Apparently there was a memo I missed. It's okay. I will, uh... There he is, he's doing alright.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that one's good.
I didn't notice.
It is the number one?
What time is it? Is that right? That ain't right.
Ready? Rockford's got his hand on it already. Rockford says we're going. The Chair will call the December 3rd, 2024 Meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, can you please call the roll?
Bill D. Alderman-Red Pat.
Here.
Alderman-Gregory.
Here.
Alderman-Williams.
Here.
Alderman-Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman-Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman-Dottriano.
Here.
Alderman-Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman-Connelly. Alderman-Donlan.
Here.
Alderman-Henauer.
Here.
Mayor-Busher.
Present.
Mayor-Busher, a quorum is present.
Thank you, Clerk Lesko. The Civility Pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. Before we get into our regular meeting, we have a couple of things that I need to cover, and the first one was, I don't know if you saw the screen before we started, but there was a QR code up there for Toys for Tots. If you feel like you're in the giving mood, we could certainly use more toys for our young ones in the community. Thank you so much. So, there's a QR code if you want, interested in how you can contribute to Toys for Tots. Thank you for that. The second thing I would like to do is, we had some exciting news happen today that actually happened in the end of November for us, but we tried to keep it quiet. But I would like to invite Sean Pritchard up to the podium if I could. And we at the City of Springfield have hired a professional planner who will work in the Office of Economic Development, and I wanted everyone here to meet Sean. So I'll let you introduce yourself.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Everybody, Sean Pritchard, as the Mayor mentioned. I'm excited. I started November 18th here in the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Come from the last four and a half, almost five years at the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, excuse me, where I've held a few different roles, one of them Acting Deputy Director of Business Development, oversaw over 12 different programs to try to not only bring companies to Illinois, but to keep them here as well. With that being said, I'm very excited about this role here. Born and raised in Springfield, graduated from Lanfor High School, live on the north side, so really excited to, you know, work on my backyard, so to speak, and, you know, some visions here. I think this is a role that, you know, we haven't had before here, so there's gonna be a lot of new, I guess, vision, I know I just said that, but it's really a chance for not only us, but the public, to look at this role and see where does it make the most sense. You know, from downtown revitalization to the walkability or bikeability of the city, to the Mid-Illinois Medical District, to the east side, to other businesses, to programs that maybe we at the city haven't thought of before, that maybe I or others know of at the state level that could just be really beneficial. So, to everybody, I'm excited. I really am looking forward to, you know, providing my all to the stewards of this great city, and kind of with that, I'll turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, for joining us. We appreciate it.
Let the record reflect that Alderwoman-Connelly has joined the quorum.
And Mr. Pritchard is a proud Ward 4 resident.
Hello, boy.
You have four Lanfor graduates on this side.
That did not come into the equation of the hiring, though. With that being said, the next thing I would like to do is invite Hewitt Douglas up to the podium.
Daughter and grandchild is with me.
Awesome. Your wife's coming up here, she said. Oh, okay.
I taught her protocol, so...
Pardon me?
I taught her protocol, so I don't know why.
I'm gonna join Mr. Douglas in just a minute, but he brought to our attention that a very good friend of his had passed and wanted us to commemorate his friend, so that's what we're gonna do here tonight for you, Mr. Douglas, and we're gonna present you a certificate. So, I'll read this and come down and present it to you, if you're okay with that?
I'm okay.
Awesome, okay. So it's a certificate of honor in memory of William B. Lucy. In recognition of a lifetime of extraordinary contributions to labor rights, civil rights, and social justice, the City of Springfield honors the legacy of William Bill Lucy. Bill Lucy dedicated over five decades of service to advancing the dignity, rights, and unity of workers around the world. As a retired Secretary Treasurer of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, and President Emeritus of the Coalition of Black Trade Unionists, CBTU, his leadership transformed the labor movement into a force of equity and justice. A co-founder of the Free South America Movement, FSAM, Bill Lucy courageously fought against apartheid and championed freedom and equality on a global scale. As the first African-American President of the Public Service International, PSI, and a member of the Executive Boards of the AFL-CIO, NAACP, Trans-Africa, and the African-American Institute, he left an indelible mark on the world. Bill Lucy visited Springfield, Illinois as a distinguished guest of AFSMI Council 31 Conventions and a keynote speaker at the Mother Jones Banquet, where he inspired the members of CBTU Springfield Chapter. His presence in Springfield served as a reminder of the ongoing struggle for labor, unity, and social justice. On behalf of the City of Springfield, we, the City Council and the Mayor, honor and recognize the legacy of William B. Lucy, and we are commemorating this today. So I'm gonna come and see... You gonna keep it for yourself? If you have, well, if you have, if you would like a second one for his family, we will give you two. That way you have your own. Absolutely.
Maybe we'll get 25 copies.
Well, it's your tax dollars.
I know, it's my taxes. I'm watching the bills that y'all spending money. I'm telling you now.
This year, because I got it.
You're not spending it the way I won, but hey, you're spending it. Yeah, yeah, anything, y'all give it away.
Yes, sir.
You wanna get up there and take the picture?
Sure. Well, you, you, you go first.
Oh, he'll get, he'll get, he's quite more professional.
See, Mr. Douglas, we do listen to you.
I appreciate it, too.
Perfect.
Can you take one with my camera?
We got one sent to you there.
Yeah, yeah.
I got one with my camera.
I will. I just sent a picture very bad tonight. Happy birthday. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I do appreciate and thank y'all, the City of Springfield. I say it once up here, I know some folks don't like me, and I know that's still true, but that's alright, because I love you all. No matter what your affiliation is, I'm an AFSMI member. I will always be proud of my public service. I did 40 years and seven months, and I watched, and I know you got a tough job, but the citizens should be listened to, alright? It's for civil rights, social rights, human rights, and my labor rights. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Okay, now the council members have a presentation in front of you, and we're going to invite up the, you want, do you want me to introduce, or you want to? We'll let Val come up and introduce first. Val's gonna tell you who's gonna give a presentation and what you're gonna hear about.
Okay.
Director Yezel, and those of you that may or may not have seen, Director Yezel has announced her retirement, and her last day will be at the end of the month.
Yes, yeah. So, good evening, everyone. Two and a half years ago, a coalition of community partners began work to create a downtown medical, downtown medical district master plan. Those partners included the City of Springfield, the Community Foundation, Springfield-Sangman Growth Alliance, Mid-Illinois Medical District, and Downtown Springfield, Inc. As a committed business member in our downtown, Horace Mann also made a financial contribution to the planning process. The draft for this plan was released October the 18th of this year, and you were all sent a link on the 19th, so hopefully you've all had a chance to really dig in. For anyone watching at home, you can find a copy of the master plan at SpringfieldMasterPlan.com. That's all one word, SpringfieldMasterPlan.com. Tonight, Josh Kuntz, the Practice Lead for House Levine, is here to present the plan to you. A copy of the presentation has been placed at your seats. So we'll just welcome Josh.
Thank you, Val, and thank you to the Mayor and to the alder, alderpersons tonight for having us here. Really appreciate the opportunity to present some of the work that we've been doing with this coalition and with city staff over the past couple of, couple of years now, and present to you what this finished document looks like for you to start to take a look and start to use it. So, again, my name is Josh Kuntz. I'm with House Levine. We're the urban planning firm that was the lead consultant on the project, and we also partnered with a few other firms that are listed on Plan Site Design, CMT, and Johnson Consulting to make sure that we got these different components of the planning process just right. And I'm also joined here tonight by my colleague, Jack Carso, as well. So, I'm just gonna do a quick project overview and orientation into the plan, and then if there's any questions or any discussion that you'd like to ask, I'm available. So, a little bit about the master plan, this really started out of the downtown next, or the next master plan, which recommended that the city undertake a downtown master plan to really dig deeper into the city center and think about what a revitalized and resilient downtown could look like. So, like with any planning process, you know, there's roots in a previous study and a suggestion that maybe at the core of the city, there could be a deeper and more detailed study that could really help start to turn the page and turn the, move the needle on some key initiatives and key actions to make this a more vibrant and active core. That was the impetus for the study. Ultimately, the purpose of the master plan is to set a community vision for the future of the downtown and the core of the Mid-Illinois Medical District, provide a decision-making framework for you all as decision-makers, and for staff, and for partner organizations, and help establish an expectation for future investment. Any master plan, not just this one, can set a long-range blueprint or roadmap and establish that community vision. A good master plan, and I'm sure this one will do this for you all, can be used to educate, engage, and inform the community, that can identify community desires, needs, and aspirations, assess existing issues and strengths, and guide a broad range of topics at the policy level. And just like this, this detailed study flowed out of that Next 10 study, this is a dynamic document as well. So, over the years, there may be areas where it's updated, or where it can provide a toehold for a grant application or an additional area of study that can come out of this document and can help achieve the funding and the, and the tools to keep things moving forward. So the purpose of this master plan is, again, to provide a decision-making framework, help people understand what to expect for the future, where and how investment could be, could happen. It can be used to evaluate and inform development proposals at the staff level and at the decision-maker level. It can set the foundation for the regulatory framework. So, as a planning document, this is a policy guide. It's not regulatory, but you may find that you need some zoning tweaks or some regulatory tweaks to make sure that you get, you achieve the vision that's articulated in this planned document. And it can coordinate initiatives. Val mentioned the coalition that was behind this. You'll hear in just a second about all the different stakeholders and community members we, we spoke with over the course of the planning process. It also recognizes that the city's not an island and that there's entities and organizations outside of the city where you may need to partner with to achieve some of these actions and goals and objectives. And perhaps ultimately, a good planning document, whether it's a master plan or a citywide plan, can really set the stage for future studies and for grant funding. These documents can really start to help people secure funding and move the needle on these important projects that you all may want to do and see happen in your downtown. We had a six-step planning process that kicked off, like Val said, just a little over two years ago. Seems like a long time. It's about par for the course for a detailed downtown study like this. Anywhere between a year and a half and two years is, to really do due diligence is really pretty common. So, from project initiation through final downtown master plan, we've been working with the coalition, a consistent core of the coalition members, and our team has been consistent throughout with our, not only House Levine, but our partner firms, to make sure that this is a document that had that consistency start to finish. If you look at the document, you'll see it's organized in this way, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through just a few of these different sections to show you, give you a little window into what's in this document. We start with an introduction. What is the study area? What are we talking about? Where is the core city center? We defined it as the core downtown and the sort of urban core portion of the Mid-Illinois Medical District, the areas where we wanna see more activity, more people living, working, participating in the community at all, at all hours, and enjoying what downtown has to offer. We had a extensive program of community engagements. A little hard to read on the screen, but across all the different formats, from key stakeholder interviews to kickoff workshops, a dedicated workshop with the business community, a visioning workshop. And we had over 800 points of engagement along the way, 800 different individuals who participated in some capacity in this process. Most recently, in October, when we had a well-attended community open house with 80-plus members of the community, seeing sort of the public unveiling of this document and what it all entailed, and then really well-attended citizens' club meeting with over 140 participants. And just in the past month, we've been able to incorporate all the feedback that we received at those, those meetings into this document. So the document that is currently online in draft format, it does reflect all the feedback from those October meetings. From there, we move into a study area profile. We did a deeper dive. As part of the study, we did an existing conditions assessment. We took a look at existing land use, went up and down every block, took photos, made sure that we got a good handle on the, on the study area. We worked with Johnson to prepare a market demographic study as part of this. We, we digested and reviewed many of the city's past plans and studies that are on the books to make sure that we understood the landscape of planning that had already been conducted prior to this particular study, and made sure that we pulled in the relevant, things that were still relevant and pertinent to the downtown study area. And by the time we got to the visioning workshop, where we tasked small groups with getting out markers and coming up with some big ideas, we had a pretty good handle on this core area. We had developed the existing conditions report, and then we were asking people to think big, and that's really where this vision statement comes out of. So, it's a concise vision statement that gets at what we heard from the community and our coalition members, that we want this core city center to be over the long term. And we paired it with four guiding principles, so I won't read them, but a livable city center, which is really focused on the idea that people increasingly want to have options to live in, in the downtown and in the core center of the community, near the, near the medical district. A, sorry, defining a place and building community. So, what is the, what does the place feel like when you're, when you're in the core of the city? What is the streetscape like? What, what is the sort of the experience on the street? Growing resilience resiliently, that core principle is about attracting business and ensuring that this is a place where the community can continue to welcome new businesses and support existing ones. Came up in the civic club discussion that there's, there's, you know, there's really a big difference between your traditional urban core and new development, and this is the area where you want small businesses and foot traffic, people who are gonna participate in those small businesses. There's a, there's a big difference, so that's what growing resiliently is about. And then connected inaccessible, accessible, which is the guiding principle that's really about, how are people moving around? Is it on foot, by bike? There's gonna, there's gonna continue to, of course, be vehicular traffic. Is it easy to get around within the study area? And so those kind of thread out to the different sections of the plan. The centerpiece of the plan really is the land use and development section. We set the stage here with some planning influences. Of course, the capital complex is a big influence on the study area. That's where a lot of people are employed, and it's the seat of state government. The Mid-Illinois Medical District at the north end of the study area has a heavy influence on this core area and how people come to and live and work in the area. The Enos Park neighborhood, which is part of the official MIMD boundary, again, a historic residential neighborhood that's right on the periphery of our study area. We took a look at the publicly owned buildings, which can have an effect on the tax rolls. That's common in a state capital, and we see that here. So, we really left no stone unturned. We took a look at the historic resources, the prevalence of surface parking, and how all these different factors sort of come into play to contribute to the city center that you have now, and what are some things that we can do to improve, build upon assets, and improve on some of the issues that were identified. We divided the study area up into what we call functional sub-areas, so even in a relatively focused study area like the city center here, there are areas that function differently. There's a different built form and parking and types of uses and building heights in the downtown core, for example, versus some of the areas on the periphery. We also took a look at some key opportunity sites. We classified them in a variety of different ways, so infill sites, which could be surface lots that are underutilized, catalyst sites, places where there's, could be parking lot improvements, and then what, what we called third places, places where people are not living or working but wanna go to do some sort of activity. And for each one of these, we explained what they are. For example, the catalyst sites here, we have a little write-up. In some cases, we've done a little model of what development at that site could look like, illustrative, not an architectural model, to show what building out to the full, full capacity of the site might look like in the future. A couple other examples here. We also have a housing strategy. If people are going to, if there's gonna be more life and activity in the city center, there's gonna need to be more housing options, so we, based on that market study that we did with Johnson Consulting, we have some key recommendations here for housing, and likewise for economic development in the land use section of the plan. And then that, that public realm piece, there's a discussion on what makes a livable city center. How do people experience the public spaces, the right-of-way, the, the street wall, the sidewalks, and some ideas for how to increase vibrancy and identify nodes of activity. I mentioned those third-place sites, so areas that could be activated, you can see distributed across the, the study area, and a discussion of what a third place is and how, what some strategies are to activate those. In the transportation section, we took what we'd call a modal hierarchy approach, so identifying... So identifying streets where probably for the foreseeable future, vehicular traffic is going to continue to be a priority, and recommendations for how those streets could improve over time. Streets where, north-south and east-west streets where walking in the city center could be a priority, and what sort of improvements and recommendations would pertain particularly to those streets. Likewise, for public transit. And then, last but not least, in the final chapter of the plan, we wrap it up with an implementation strategy. So I like to point out, if we stopped at just the lofty aspirational vision and the set of goals, people would say like, how are we going to get this done? Even with the overall plan, there's a lot in there, and we don't want to kind of just throw it out there and throw it at the wall. The implementation strategy provides some downtown management approaches, downtown funding approaches. You can see an organizational chart for how the city can work with partner organizations to actually achieve some of these things. And then, perhaps most importantly, an implementation action matrix. So what this does is it takes every recommendation in the plan, it distills it down to its sort of its core should statement, its actionable statement. It assumes that Springfield is sort of the lead on all of these. This plan is directed toward the city of Springfield as the lead actor, but it identifies a timeline and a potential partnership, recognizing that the city can't be solely responsible for every single thing in a plan like this, and there's going to need to be some coordination and collaboration with members of the Coalition and other partners in the region. And then lastly, the existing conditions memorandum, the market study, summaries of all the outreach work that our team did over the course of the project. And all the stuff that was produced leading up to drafting the plan is collected in an appendix if someone would like to read. Well, what did they actually talk about in that visioning workshop, or what did they talk about in those key stakeholder interviews? So if you were inclined to really dig deep into this, you could see, hopefully, how the community feedback and all the work that we did threads right into this document. So hopefully, I didn't take too much of your time. I am available if you have any questions. I do want to just reiterate what a great process this has been. We've had excellent participation along the way, really good collaboration with city staff and with the Coalition members that Val mentioned at the outset. It really has been a process where we've heard from so many folks along the way, and we're very proud. Our firm is very proud of the work product that we were able to put together and certain that it'll be something that will help you all continue to do the work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Val, do you want to come back up for a minute? Thank you, Josh. So the reason that this was presented to you, counsel, is according to the plan, the city is the lead on this, so they're asking us to maybe adopt a resolution to take this plan on. For those of you who haven't read it in depth, I will tell you that it states that we should have a full-time employee dedicated to making this plan happen, and we do not have that at this time. I know I announced we have a planner, but that's for the whole city, for all 10 of you, the planner, the city planner is. So just want to bring that up so you can ask questions or discussion. It looks like Alderman Carlson has a discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Val or Josh, a general question. I know this is a plan for over 20 years, and I think some of us up here, you know, like to have some sort of benchmarks every year, and I don't know. I mean, do you see this as, I assume, you know, things aren't going to be subtracted from this document, but added to, you know, is it going to kind of be a living, breathing plan where you add things to as we head down that path? Is that, is there a plan to meet every year?
Absolutely. In fact, I think he kind of suggested that, that this is a plan that should be looked at yearly. I mean, of course, it should be the guide for the whole year, but it should be evaluated each year because things change. Even, I had to make some changes, some pretty substantial changes from when they started to things that had happened. The mayor had done some things, had already accomplished some things. So before we even presented it, I had some changes that we already had to make. So yes, I think this is going to be a living.
So maybe every year, we can come back, Mayor, and just maybe get a quick update like we, I mean, I think we do on some other programs, so.
Depends upon if you adopt it and we have someone working on it.
Thank you, Mayor.
There's some caveats. Any other discussion from the council?
Thank you.
Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Val. And thank you, Sean, for coming tonight.
And I just want to say, I've got several of our partners, not from the Coalition, are here with us. The Growth Alliance is here, DSI is here. And I know I heard from Ryan Crook, he didn't think he was going to be able to make it from the Mid Illinois Medical District, but they've been a tremendous help to get this ushered through, so just want to acknowledge them, too.
Ryan, Abby, or Carlos, do you have anything you need to add? They're all being quiet.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here as well. Okay, with that being said, the chair will entertain a motion. Yes, sir. Oh, sorry, Alderwoman Conley, thank you.
Thank, I just, real quickly.
You caught me on the pledge, too.
Just real quickly, I haven't had a chance to dig real deeply into this, so I'm assuming we have contacts for everybody, and we can reach out with questions later and get into more details, because we'll, do we have an expectation of a resolution to bring this forward, or is that a conversation for another day?
It will take three weeks. When we introduce it, you'll have three weeks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And just to, so you all know, I had asked on a call yesterday, and all the feedback that they've received from the public meetings they've had, they've incorporated into the plan now. So what you will see online is all of those comments, which Josh did touch on that, too, in his presentation.
Thank you very much.
So if your constituents want to know if their voices were heard, that was a part of it, so.
Wonderful. Thank you for all that work.
Alderman Gregory, it looks like we have a couple others signed up to speak.
No, I would, just a general idea, I think maybe, I don't know where we're at, we're about to get in budget season as far as another employee, but if possible, you know, maybe Ryan and Ms. Abby can lead that charge along with our partnership with the Growth Alliance or with the downtown. Just a thought, just a thought. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I just, does anyone have a, with budget season coming in, does anybody have a general idea what this is going to cost the city approximately per year to implement? Do you have no idea? Because.
I would say, if you look at the plan over the 20 years, I mean, it's recommending more things that I think we need anyway, but obvious things, more walkability, more bikability in our community, which is definitely needed. It's looking for development downtown. It's looking for creating more economic development opportunities for certain kinds of businesses. So we would need a dedicated staff member to make those things happen, which I think is why the plan asks for that, because with our normal staff, there isn't always time. I would say if we didn't add a staff member, you could take that timeframe from 20 and expect it to be 40 years or more, so.
Well, and I would anticipate us being able to get some grants for some of this stuff, too, hopefully. So, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any others? Okay, thank you. All right, Alderman Rockford, you get me if anyone else pipes up.
You've got it.
All right, thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the November 19th, 2024, regular city council meeting.
Don't move.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The chair will now entertain with a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
Don't move, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
Don't move.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage with the exception of I need someone to entertain a proposed amendment to ordinance 2024-492. Does anyone have that in common?
No, so this proposed amendment was circulated at the committee of the whole meeting. It proposed amendment number one, changes the funding source. It takes $21,000 out of police, P O P R dash 1507, which is the Police General Fund, and instead allocates that $21,000 from police, O R C G, which is the Organized Retail Crime Grant, for $21,000. So the funding for this line item, A R P G, is unchanged. That's $142,800. Line P O P R is now, changes from $115,700 to $94,700, and line item, O R C G, is added for $21,000.
Would it be better to pull it out, or just go ahead and make the motion to amend this?
Make the motion to amend as proposed.
I make the motion to adopt amendment number one.
So we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda to amend 2024-492 to the amendment that Corporation Council read into the record. All those, and can I just do a roll call? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it for the proposed amendment. So now the chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage with the amended 2024-492. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda? Alderman Carlson.
I'm sorry, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Through all that general counsel, we're just moving money from one ARPA fund to another, from ARPA to ARPA, the funds.
Yeah, those are all ARPA line items.
I just want to confirm that.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
The ordinance was failed to be amended during the committee of the whole. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Voting will now, that's it, Alderman Carlson's the only one signed up to speak. Any other discussion? Voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Motion passes with 10 voting yes and voting no. Agenda items 2024-239, 2024-333, and 2024-451 remain tabled or in committee. I know we have some people signed up to speak on 2024-451. Does anyone want to pull that out of committee?
Yes.
Otherwise, they can speak at the end, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, let's go ahead and pull 2024-451 onto the debate agenda.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pull 2024-451 out of committee and put on debate. First, I would have the council members that have an opportunity to speak, speak first before the public, so if anyone in the council would like to speak on this, please let me know. Seeing none, would that be true? And we have three members of the community signed up to speak on this particular ordinance. So first, I would like to ask Emily Anderson if you would like to come up and speak.
Hello again. This has been a great learning experience for me, so I wanted to just say thank you for that in the first place. It started, again, with our students, trying to be critical thinkers, getting the different perspectives of something where one perspective was given. We've gotten students outside of the classroom, thinking, learning, growing, caring, voicing their opinion here in local government, which is hopefully like something for the future, right? And I know this is, it's been a long time us coming here, but I think everybody has to agree the purpose is in full with students, you know, sharing their voice and getting this experience. So again, thank you for this. The biggest thing for me takeaway is empathy, being able to put yourself in somebody else's reality and feeling the emotions that they feel. I know today's society that we don't have much empathy, we're desensitized to it, we're unconnected, so I want to ask you for a moment to imagine if you were indigenous. Okay, just imagine here with me, you, your family, as far back as you remember, had lived on this land. You had a harmonious relationship with the earth, used everything it gave you, didn't waste anything, and you couldn't imagine owning land, or yes, owning land. You had a spiritual connection. New people who spoke a different language came to you, you befriended them, you helped them, you trusted them, okay, only to realize they didn't care about you. All they cared about is what you had. You realize what greed is, what manipulation is, what evil intentions are. How's it feel? It doesn't stop there. They keep taking advantage. You and your family, your tribe, fight back, that's not enough. They want quarters of gold, you don't bring it to them, they'll cut your hand off, they'll cut your ear off, too. Your beloved women, the little girls in your tribe that you've watched since you were young, or since they were young, they're taken advantage of, they're assaulted. Others are sold into basically what slavery is, and their own land. Still, these people that are doing this are the ones that have the power. There's nothing that can be done. Slowly, you lose your voice, and it's continued to be silenced. These people with power have stripped you, your people, your culture, your voice, and your hope. Now, numbers are dying out, but their presence, and so is their presence, or so is your presence in this world. You're not remembered. Hardly anybody thinks to care or attempt to carry on your legacy. There's a city in Illinois, there's these two teachers, there's their students who care and want to make a difference. The people that these teachers stand in front of and ask are the people now that have the What will they do with that power? As leaders of our city, you have the power to show empathy, model empathy. You have the power to listen to and understand other people's perspectives, and also to restore hope. You have the ability to help a silenced people's voice be heard again. Your power can help our city acknowledge the wrongs of the past and move forward towards healing together. We would be proud if you would acknowledge the second Tuesday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day, and if need be, the Italian-American Heritage Day as well. And I just, last few seconds, if it's not voted on today, what in the future can we expect? Can I ask you, Alderman Gregory?
Alderman Gregory, we can discuss after all the speakers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. The next person signed up to speak on this is Michelle Cruz Heine.
Good evening. Thank you for taking it out of committee so that we could speak on it before the end of the night. I thought about U I S over the weekend, thought about the student there that asked for a proclamation to be made. There was nothing on that calendar, no Columbus Day, no nothing, but they wanted Indigenous Peoples' Day recognized. I think about our students who asked, what can we do to start making these people be remembered and recognized? And I thought, well, why is it important? Why is it important, right? So before Juneteenth happened, I didn't know about Juneteenth. I had no idea about it. I'm a teacher. I didn't learn about it in school. None of my students before me learned about it in school. I still didn't pick up a book on it, but guess what? I know about it today because it became a holiday. That made me learn. It's everywhere. Now everybody knows and everybody talks about what happened that day, and that makes me happy, and that gives me hope. That gives me hope that if Indigenous Peoples' Day is recognized and proclaimed in this city, that people will talk about the history, the forcible removals from their school, from their families' homes, put in schools where hundreds of thousands are still unaccounted for today, where they were beaten because they spoke their language, where they could not celebrate their culture, where we don't understand nothing about culture. That is a problem. I went to a restorative justice training today for the District 186 schools, where we talked about how culture and the ignorance of it is a problem for our students. Our students are working so hard. They are learning about government, where people don't want us to speak about government. They are learning about government, where people don't want us to speak about government. They are learning to come and use their voice and advocate for themselves. That is the most important thing any student could have for in today's education, is to learn about government, is to learn how to use their voice, to learn how this system operates, to see the people advocating for themselves and learning how to use it and stand up for themselves. From the time they're in fifth grade, they learn about Abraham Lincoln, go to his house and see what he did, how he stood up for the people when everybody was against him. Why this is such a controversy, I can't even explain to them. Because why? Not even supposed to talk about racism, so I don't trigger anybody, but I just did. So, because why else is it a controversy if it's not that? And I can't say anything. Why is it such a problem, Mrs. Cruz? Why is it a problem? I don't know. Don't know. I hope somebody can tell me. I hope that it gets voted on. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person signed up to speak is Mason Lane.
Yet no march up seeing, he is not, he is unable to speak.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the end of our public speakers. So at this time, do any of the council members who are on discussion have anything that they would like to say? Alderwoman Noctiano.
Sure. So. I just. So as a former teacher of political science, this is a little bit advanced for high school students. But the reason that there is a problem with this is related to our campaign finance laws and related to donations and people who make donations and money in politics. So I'll leave that there. I want to begin my remarks by thanking the students of the Springfield Learning Academy because this proclamation didn't originate from anyone on this side of the horseshoe. It came from them. Through their studies, these students believed it was important for our city to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day alongside our state and federal recognitions of Columbus Day in order to provide a deeper understanding of the history of this land and the rich cultures that have called it home for much longer than we often recognize. Students and teachers have come before this council week after week in hopes that we would acknowledge their initiative with this simple proclamation. Throughout that time, the discussion has veered beyond the scope of the text in front of us. So let's be clear. This proclamation does not ask us to come to an agreement on the legacy of Christopher Columbus. This recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day does nothing to diminish our recognition of the contributions of Italian Americans and that they've made to our community, our state, and our country. These students are simply asking us to recognize the history of Indigenous people as an equal part of our history. And that's why the students request to make this recognition on the second Monday in October. And that day is purposeful and important. It's about celebrating a fuller version of history. It's about the belief that in a country where we all celebrate the multiple elements of our own heritage, we can also celebrate the amazing tapestry of our shared history. The students who brought this idea to us have learned that celebrating that tapestry as a whole and recognizing that full history often requires us to hold multiple ideas in our heads at the same time. And that's a lesson that those students are trying to share with us. Changing the date would teach these students a very different lesson. We would be telling them that the things they've learned are less important than our preconceived beliefs. We'd be telling them that the work they're doing in the classroom takes a backseat to our notion of things that are not even in the text before us. So while I wholeheartedly support the text of this proclamation as it currently reads, my vote today is first and foremost a vote to celebrate the students of Springfield Learning Academy, their desire to learn, and the lengths they've gone to to pursue their goals in a way that lifts up everyone and takes from no one. Let's show them that we strive to do that as well. Let's pass the proclamation they asked for. Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes, thank you. So when this first came about, I was the alderman that said, yeah, we'll, we'll do it because, you know, it's a proclamation and, and you guys have been here a few weeks. So, so I said, fine, we'll do it. And, and, and I get what we're learning in school. I know full the truth. As a black man who live in America, I can definitely, definitely, definitely relate to a lot of those things. But part of politics and part of sitting in these seats is hearing everybody who you represent. Not only do I represent people that look like me, I represent people that don't look like me. And I have to take all of those things into account. So that is why I brought forth a alternate date. Not to shun anybody. I appreciate Jennifer's words, but I can for surely tell you, these two aldermen here, bro, ain't got no money to donate to anybody. So we're not motivated, never have been, never will be by, by any funds. My motivation is by the people. And when I took this position, it's always to do what's best for the people more though, more so than what I may think is best. So, so I thought that would be best. But that's not a proclamation, I don't know if the students would, would accept it, but that the teachers don't want to accept. So that's fine. We, we can put it through just, just as it is. But, but I hope that when we leave this, whether it goes votes up or votes down, that we really put in some work in this. This is not a pander to the Native American people, that we really put some education around it. We, we can't just pass days to be symbolic and say, oh, yeah, we did, let them go around. We really have to do some work in it and understand what Indigenous Peoples' Day really means. I can tell you, in our community, we feel like we're indigenous to this whole world, period, of civilization. So, and others don't, you know, but that's my spiel. But that is why I tried to find an alternate date. I tried to find a compromise between two groups of people who feel strongly about one day. And that's, that's, that's my spiel on it, but that's not what you guys want to accept. I don't want to let young people feel like we don't care or hear you, because we do hear you. But when you get in these roles, you have to listen to everybody. You can't listen to one side or the other. You have to listen to everybody and then try to come to a decision. So that's why I came to that decision. So, thank you.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. And I just want to kind of echo, you know, Alderman Gregory, I understand where you were going with that, I certainly do. But I think, I think you've actually already told us why this is important. We're talking about a proclamation that changes nothing on our existing calendar, except to say that we recognize those that were here before us. And we've recognized, and, and starting, this is the beginning of a conversation. And you're right, Alderman Gregory, it needs to be a substantive conversation to, to understand and acknowledge the, the contributions that Indigenous people make to our country, to understand and recognize what we as, as current people of this, this city, this, this state and this country owe to those who were here before us. Our state name has Native roots. I mean, we, we, we take a lot from that. And, and this is an opportunity for us to give back, to give an acknowledgement and that says that those people who were indigenous to our country, who still live in our country, are valued and respected. I'd like to point out, we currently in Illinois, we now have, for the first time, a federally recognized tribe in this, in this state. And, and that tribe is working with the state of Illinois to get some tribal lands back under their control. These are good steps because we have a lot of history in this country, and it's not all sunshine and flowers. And Alderman Gregory Williams and Purchase, and Alderwoman Purchase and I were at different tables at a meeting last night, listening to some of the conversations around the 1908 race riot. And those are not easy conversations, right? It's not fun to, to hear what was going on there, but sunshine on things like that brings it out, and we need to normalize having conversations that are not easy, that look at topics that can be contentious and, and hurtful, and then take that away. Because I want to say, I, I plan to support this, this resolution. I am very proud of our Italian American heritage. I in no way, shape, or form intend my vote to be anything other that, that has any disparagement on that. But what you brought forward to us, what you've highlighted to us, is, is the need to really accent, put that accent on the Indigenous peoples in this community, the Indigenous peoples in this state, and acknowledge that. And yes, it's been, it's been kind of a little bit of a road. I will tell you, a lot of local government stuff takes bumps and twists and turns, and it doesn't always look like a straight path, and it's confusing. But we are too, right? I mean, government can be messy. And, but we need to be better. We need to be able to have these conversations. We need, we need to be able to highlight them. And I, I will just say one thing. I, I don't completely agree, Alderman Noctiano, full respect. I, I don't think it's financial contributions. I think that, I've not had this, but I know that other members of this council have had, you know, emotional and, and, and conversations with, with people of Italian American heritage that just want to make sure that that recognition is not disparaged either. We have a strong and vibrant community in this city of, of Italian Americans who contribute from historically, who are here today, who I respect, and I think we, we all do. This is not, this is not anything against that. And I understand going, you know, putting this on the second Monday of October has other connotations. But I think we can all be adults in the room, and we can lead this conversation in a way that is respectful, that acknowledges everyone's contributions, but also shine a light on something that has not had daylight. The way American, Native Americans are treated in this country is shameful. It absolutely is. And it's our, we have small chances, right? We have small steps that we can take to be part of a greater movement that, that turns that message around, that changes that tide, and that highlights really the beauty of the Indigenous people of the country that we live in. So, thank you for hearing me out, for letting me speak my piece. I do plan to support this, and, and I do that with full acknowledgement and honor and respect to Italian Americans in this country too, in this city. I know we have prominent families who contribute, not to campaigns, but to our community. And that is important. But silent voices and people who don't have that, who don't have as much of a presence in our community, they're critically important too. And, and I also want to say thank you to Springfield Learning Academy students, to your teachers, for taking on something that is not easy, and I understand that, because you went to the school district first, right? And those changes need to be made at a higher level. You want to talk about fun and complicated, city council isn't anywhere near as much fun as the state is. But those conversations need to be had. And I think this is an opportunity for us to take leadership in something that is, that is important. And, and I thank you for highlighting this and for bringing it, and, and for you coming tonight. Good for you. Go on, talk to you. You didn't have to get up and speak, and I, and I appreciate, that's, that's great. But you're here, and you're here standing for your fellow students, and we see you and appreciate that very much. So, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor. I've heard the word shameful used a couple of times. What I find shameful is the politicizing of this resolution by some of us who may or may not vote no, with, with something that we don't even recognize as a city. To sit here and hear someone say that the handful or two handful of people who have contacted me in Ward Seven, who don't contribute to my campaign, want me to vote no on this, that's what's shameful, that we're politicizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Okay, we're on debate, so with that being said. Do you want me to take us out of order because there is an ordinance numerically before this one? Do you want to go back, or do you want to vote now, counsel?
Let's just vote.
Okay. Is that all right, operation council? All right, so we're going to go out in numerical order, and then we're on debate. So with that being said, the voting will now be open. Those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. I hope y'all hear me click here. The motion fails with six voting no, five voting yes. The next item on the agenda is item number 2024-497, an ordinance declaring the office of the city clerk vacant and appointing a new city clerk.
Motion to hold, Mayor.
We have a motion to hold.
There's no vacancy at this time, so we might as well hold it in.
We have a second. Any discussion on holding this ordinance?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Williams.
So I'm trying to understand why there's no vacancy, and then I'm reading in the paper that we have a new clerk over there at Sangamon County. So I'm trying to figure out corporate counsel, how we have a person in two positions at one time, and what exactly is going on, and what exactly is this process that we're living through right now? Where, where we had an election, and, and we got the results, and I thought it was over. And, 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 and here we are, weeks later, still going through the same thing, holding up a position on the city side, saying that there's no opening, I guess, but yet we have a winner over on the county side. Can you please explain this?
Sure. So I'll address what's going on with the election first. So right now, our city clerk Lesko was declared the winner for the county recorder race. They, that decision has been challenged with what's called a discovery recount. Now that, all that recount does is it opens up 25% of the precincts for the candidates who, for that seat, to look to see if there's enough evidence to actually file a lawsuit to challenge the election. So the results of the election are final for county recorder unless and until there's a, there's a court ruling on that court case, which doesn't impact the, the city. It, it impacts our city clerk and his role as county recorder, but the city doesn't have a role in that recount. So our city clerk, our, our, our city code and our consent decree do not define what creates a vacancy in the seat of an elected official. But state statute does. So under, under the, under the municipal code, elected official, including our, our city clerk, a vacancy can occur by resignation, death, abandonment, conviction of a certain criminal offenses. If an election is declared void, that would be the election for the city clerk, not, not the county recorder election, or if the elected official owes a debt to the, to the municipality. So those are the events that trigger a vacancy. When this ordinance was drafted, looking at the, looking at the timing of when the election would be declared over, because it was a close election, if there were to be a resignation, the, the city and city council wanted to be in a position to pass a resolution appointing a new city clerk, as we discussed at the last couple meetings. We have not received a resignation from the, from the city clerk. So there is no vacancy that was created by resignation. In looking at our city code and at our consent decree, they both have the same language. And that language provides that an alderperson, the mayor, the city clerk, and the city treasurer, or elected officials, cannot hold any other office or employment except that of mayor pro temp. So we, I tried to determine what, what that phrase meant, and that comes, very closely tracks language from the municipal code, which prevents mayors, alderpersons, elected clerks, and elected treasurers from holding any other office under the municipal government, office or employment. And the reason that that interpretation makes more sense in our case is because there are several alderpersons who hold outside employment, who hold other employment. So, so I, I do not believe that the, that the election was a disqualifying event for the office of, of city clerk. So then the final So then the final inquiry we have to do is we go to common law to see if the elected positions are in fact compatible. And the determination for incompatibility comes from the attorney general's office and the courts. And there's been no determination yet that the office of city clerk is incompatible with the office of county recorder. So because there's no defined abandonment or resignation that we have received from the city, there is no vacancy to fill at this time, because we haven't triggered one of those events that's required under the municipal code.
So my question to you is, so the clerk ran for city clerk, and he's our city clerk. Then he ran for county clerk. Did he win?
County recorder.
County recorder, I'm sorry. So the difference in aldermen holding a state job or another employment is that that's a job not elected? In this case, he's elected, is he not?
Yes, he's elected.
So there's no comparison then?
Well, the language used in our consent decree and in our city code combines those terms. So they treat another office and outside employment, it's in the same sentence, the same paragraph. They're treated the same way. That's why we have to look to state statute and to common law to determine whether or not these two elected positions are compatible or incompatible.
Thank you.
Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, so to the city council, I met with Corporation Council on Monday. Pertaining to the timeline, the city has no timeline on this circumstance to when an elected official with the city who takes an oath to fulfill his obligation to a job for four years, runs for another office and wins, there's no timeline on when we can ask for his vacancy. So I met with Corporation Council, asked him to do his due diligence, and it's not going to happen overnight. You know, it's going to be a time-consuming investigation, so to speak, to look at everything. And so we're not breaking any federal or state laws or regulations. And my whole thing is, like I said, you take an oath as a city official to fulfill your obligation. And then to go over and take an oath at a county job for another full-time position, we know what it takes to be an alderman and a full-time elected official. And now to take on two jobs, to me morally, step down from one to go to the other. But that's my opinion, and I wanted to share it. But I just want to let you know that I have talked to Corporation Council and to do the investigation and look at it. And maybe in the future, we can sit down and come up with a timeline in case this ever happens again. So, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Look, I get it. I'm not a big fan of it either. But quite honestly, the election, although it's certified, it's not over. They're doing a recount. What happens if the recount comes back and it's overturned? Then Mr. Lesko, Clerk Lesko, loses both jobs if we fill it. I think we owe it to him to give him a couple of weeks, which is what the, I don't know how long the discovery is, two, three weeks maybe? I mean, that's what we're looking at. Yeah, people, you know, you can say what you want. But I think that if the tides were turned, I think anyone up here would do the same thing. And I would say the same on the other side at the county if they were coming over here. You can't expect someone to take a job when they're still counting votes. They're recounting votes. So, you know, I don't think that Clerk Lesko wants this. You know, it's hard on him, I'm sure. It can't be easy jumping back and forth, having to deal with that. And, you know, I look at it as, you know, it's a part-time thing, this is only going to be a short-time thing. And, you know, then we'll get on with the business and get a new clerk if that's the way the votes stay and move on. But, yeah, I mean, I can't expect him to step down when he, they're still, you know, if they concede the election and say they're not recounting, then I'm sure we'd be in a whole different thing. So that's my take.
Alderman Gregory.
I feel like, you know, Lesko, I like you. I think you've done a okay job over the years, and it's good to know you. But I think for the people, county and city, they need 100% of you. They don't need 50% here, 50% on the county side. And then when we talk about discovery recounts, it could take, I mean, I had a little bit of votes, right? You're talking about a race that had 80,000 votes. They get to look at 25% ballot by ballot. Eyes going to be popping out of their heads. It could take years. We just did the McCoupin County or the Macon County sheriff thing got decided two years after that.
The date is either the 21st of December or 23rd.
That you will be resigning?
That's the date when the discovery is over.
Okay, so.
And I might point out, Alderman, that I'm not taking a salary or benefits.
I understand that.
From Sangamon County. But I think it's only fair to the people out in Springfield and Sangamon County to have every vote counted and tabulated. So let the process end. Let the process get to its completion. And at that point, I will resign the seat, as I have intended from the very beginning. And if the other side believes that, then they should concede and give it to the public also, so we can have one person serving.
Yeah, but I thank you for, I was still talking, but I thank you for that. But this isn't about sides. This ain't about Josh. This ain't about you. This is about the city of Springfield continuing on our business and you having to do two jobs at one time. We need to make sure. We about to come up in budget season. So the recount comes.
How does that have anything to do with it?
Because we're going to be busy. So now we got to do budget season, and we have to do interviews, figure out that process. And you hindering us, bro.
How am I hindering you?
You're hindering us. You should, you should, hold on, hold on, Frank. Let me talk.
Okay, then let me talk.
No, let me talk. You talk after me. It ain't my turn. Click your button. Don't play with me up in here. What happens when the discovery recounts over then? Are you going to resign so we can move on with our business?
Absolutely.
Okay, then. That's all you have to do, and tell them. You're talking about when the election process is over? This thing could go on for years.
We're talking about the discovery.
Wait, I'm not done.
Clerk Lesko, let's let him finish.
Don't do me like that, like I'm just sitting here asking you questions to mess up what you got going on. I'm trying to continue on with the business we got. So we can get somebody in your seat, and we can move on. We already don't even know how that process is going to go. We got to go through that. We got budget season coming. We got big problems. Go on over there. If he wins the recount, you just lose your job. That's just how it is. What do you want to do? Hold it until it's done, so you can guarantee you come back? Come on now, that ain't right neither. Come on, man. I'm done, Mayor, thank you.
Alderwoman Nocecano.
I'll let Clerk.
Clerk Lesko speak. Okay, thank you. And then I'll come back to you, Alderwoman. Clerk Lesko, go ahead.
I think that we allow the process to go on, the discovery process. There is a process through the county clerk's office when they get through that process and see if there needs to be a legal lawsuit. I've won the election. I've been certified as the winner. So we need to move on. We need to get through the process. But I can't do that. These circumstances are out of my control. There is no hindrance. I challenge anybody to qualify anything that hasn't been done in the city clerk's office. That office has been covered and will continue to be covered. Last night, I left the city clerk's office at 10:00 p.m., and I will continue to that. You know why? Because I love Sangamon County. I love the city of Springfield. And I'll do whatever the hell it takes to make sure that the constituents are taken care of and so that they are able to be served. And I take it personal for anybody to say, I've served my entire life, given everything, because I believe in serving and I believe in giving to the people. And I will continue to do that. That's why I'm not backing off, because of this political play that's going on right now. Let the process end through the discovery. I will resign that position. And I will take the position that I earned as the winner of the Sangamon County Recorder's office. Thank you.
Alderwoman Nocecano.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a suggestion, thinking from an HR perspective. This is deeply uncomfortable for me to discuss this in front of everyone. But in your normal job, maybe you would take like a leave of absence or if you have some time that's accrued that you could take in order to like get us through this transition. I feel like that would be, I don't know. I don't know if anyone's considered that, so I'm just throwing it out there. That's it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk Lesko, do you have any?
Yes, so my question would be that in order to me to take a leave of absence or to be gone, that would mean that I wouldn't be able to conduct my duties as the city clerk. And once again, I challenge anyone. The ordinances are done. We've met the deadlines for posting. We've met every deadline that we're supposed to, and we will continue to do this. I have good staff. I'm supervising three people here at the city. I'm supervising eight people over at the county. I've supervised over 200 people before. I will make this work. I'm not double-dipping. What I am doing is trying to cover both jobs and let my opponent get through the process so that they feel whole. But I don't think it would be fair to insist that I resign this position before the process is ended with the discovery and to give up two seats that I've earned and won through a fair election. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, so basically, Mr. Moore, Doc, we have no control. We can't do anything right now. Is that correct? We, I mean, there's nothing in our statute to say that we can do anything. So, I mean, we can argue this all we want, but we have no control over this.
Right, your appointment power isn't triggered until there's a vacancy in the seat of city clerk.
And whether we like the way the process is, there's nothing we can do. I recall when we've had some previous aldermen that got into some trouble, and there was nothing they could do for them. You know, that's just, there's certain things that we don't have the power to do based on the consent decree. And I don't know that everybody, every time anybody's mentioned about that dissent consent decree, it seems like it's chiseled in iron, and you can't change it. I don't know what's involved with changing. But, I mean, these are, you know, we're stuck here. So, you know, Mr. Lesko's going to have to make it work, whether we like it or not. I mean, we all have our opinions. And I think that, you know, when the process plays out, we'll deal with it then. Thank you.
Clerk Lesko.
Yes, and one other point that I want to make is I want to make sure that the next clerk coming in, we have a wonderful city clerk's office, a lot of good employees. I want to make sure that there is a transition period too, so that the person, whoever you picked, will be able to understand what's going on in the city clerk's office. And that process takes about three weeks, because you have to go through first read, you go through committee, and then you go through council. I was given that opportunity when I went through, when I was elected as clerk. And it's only fair to the person that you choose to have that opportunity to do that. So I want to still be involved to help them. But I'm going to resign as soon as the election is resolved. But I want to give the city clerk's office an opportunity to have transition, unlike, there was no transition for me. I walked into the job blind on Monday. And I will figure it out. The offices are similar, and there's good staff over there. Things are working, and they're working well. But I don't want to do that to the city clerk's office. I want to give you a transition period so that there's not a step missed. Again, thank you.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second to put ordinance 2024-497 back to the committee. All those in favor, please say.
I think it's just a hold here, Mayor.
Oh, just hold it here, not put it back in committee? Sorry, I apologize, I had the motion wrong. I have a motion and a second to leave 2024-497 on the debate agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. From the council, is there any unfinished business to bring before the council? Alderwoman Purchase, you got nothing? Is there any new business? Oh, wait, sorry, Alderman Gregory, my apologies.
No, I was just going to recognize, thank all of our departments and everybody who worked on that Stanford street getting done. The bike path looks lovely.
Do you want Director Fuchs to come up?
Director, he ain't got to come up. I just want to say salute, thank y'all. The people over there is very, very, very happy that they can get out without rocks and all that stuff. It's been a long process, and we appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to announce, and I apologize, Alderman Redpath, I didn't have a chance to talk to you today, but did talk to Doug Brown. We have our next quarterly utility committee meeting update. We'll be coming, Doug, you're going to have to correct me if I say this wrong, but at the next committee of the whole, so next Tuesday?
Okay.
Yes, and we will be hearing, we have representatives from the U of I Sustainable Technology Center will be coming to give us a presentation update and background on the carbon capture program that's currently being implemented at the utility. This will be, I believe this should set the calendar then for our quarterly meetings. And we will be looking three months out from next meeting to have the following utility committee, utility subcommittee or committee meeting at a committee of the whole. And certainly, we can get topics, questions, concerns, pull them together. I mean, obviously, we can talk about them at any time. But I do think it's important that we continue to have these as quarterly meetings. And really very much looking forward to next week and hearing from the U of I and the work that they're doing at the utility. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Alderwoman Purchase.
I changed my mind.
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, we're in the season of giving and the holiday spirit. Sometimes it's real contentious up here. So I'm going to say, 'tis the season to be jolly. And we have our DSI executive director here tonight. And I would like to give him a few moments, because I don't have anything, everything in front of me. But I know our kickoff to our holiday walks is starting also this Wednesday. So Carlos, could you please remind us of what to look forward to? I thought we needed a little holiday cheer, so come on.
I got the Illinois Times right here. So this is a perfect opportunity. Hi, everyone, my name is Carlos Ortega. I'm the executive director of Downtown Springfield Incorporated. I'll be very brief. Holiday walks is upon us. The holiday cheer for downtown community is in full swing. We have organized different activities through our partners such as the AL PLM, the Kidzium, Visit Springfield, and other institutions like the Johnny Owens and musical established, musical individuals such as that. We are every Wednesday and Saturday, Wednesday from four to eight and Saturday from 10 to eight. Our shops are, should be open, accepting visitors of all kinds to support our downtown economy through a unique shopping experience. Yeah, that's, that's good, I think. There's more things, but.
Scott over there?
Yeah.
Scott Dahl, do you want to tell them about the trolley? Do you have that for Saturdays?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Apparently not.
We'll talk later.
You can always, you know, get up there.
I authorized it, so I didn't know.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I had an update on that. So there is a maintenance issue with the trolley and so we're not for sure it's going to be resolved by then, so.
Okay.
Hopefully the trolley will be back. Well, yes, the trolley, once the maintenance issue is resolved, will be back on Saturdays as it was for History Comes Alive this past summer, which was a big hit, so let's hope it gets solved. Yes?
So I was, we had talked about having that because it's so cold out to help folks travel around downtown. So, yeah. Alderwoman Conley's not done with you, I guess.
I just have a quick question. First of all, Alderwoman Purchase, thank you for bringing this up. I got some great presents for my family. I'm almost done and a lot of that was downtown this Saturday. So, yes, I'll be, I'm looking forward, well, tomorrow night I'm not in town, but real quick, will we have the SMTD decorated singing bus?
Yes, it's back. Yes, absolutely. Holly.
It's not the trolley, but Holly's there.
Holly is back, yes.
Downtown for the tree lighting.
It's quite the.
I know, I just wanted to point out.
Quite the tradition.
We might not have the trolley, but we do have.
We've had, we don't have the trolley, but we have Holly.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
If you can't use a little rhyming in your day, then what are you doing?
So to piggyback on what Alderwoman Conley spoke about, next Tuesday is December 10th. That's when there will be the public utility update, quarterly update. And then you'll have one more meeting and then the holiday. So I would just like to bring Director Yezel up real quick because in the event she doesn't make it here for some reason right before the holiday. I know. This might be her last meeting, I don't know, so I wanted to thank you publicly for your service to the city. When I took over as mayor, I didn't have anyone pegged just to be the economic development director. Val knew it and she said I will step in interimly and help you. And then an interim turned into a job and she has decided that it is time for her to no longer have a full-time position in her life. So I just wanted to say thank you.
For life, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, for the rest of her life. I wanted to say thank you for stepping up, helping and working in the agency and your institutional knowledge came back very quickly and very hopefully, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
And it was important to me that we get a city planner on board and Val was instrumental in helping us get that done too. So thank you for working on that, for helping me with some of those visions, so.
Well, you know, I, I've told all of you this at one time or other, but I'll say it again, I love my job. This not so much, but I love my job, you know? It is a pleasure, it is a pleasure. I have spent my whole life as a customer service, in customer service. Everything I've ever done has been, there's been a component of customer service. And I know that I was able to bring this and, you know, the outpouring of support since I, I mean, just yesterday it was announced and the outpouring of support from the community has been really overwhelming at different times. People thanking me and, you know, saying, you helped me get through this or you helped me problem solve. And it has been a real pleasure to do that. So I thank you for allowing me that opportunity.
Yep, and Alderwoman Conley wants to speak with you too.
I just, Val, I just want to add, I mean, I think, you know, we had a presentation recently by HUD. They came in and, you know, as someone who works with federal agencies, you don't frequently get a federal agency coming in and giving the kind of kudos that we got for your work, for your leadership of your office. And, and it was probably, it was a long night that night and we didn't really get into it a whole lot, but I would just like to highlight, you've had, you've had a rich career with, with a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of effort. We've thrown new programs at you and tried to change things, but with all of that, you've managed your office, you've brought this city to the point where we are now getting public recognition from a federal funder for managing a program that is not an easy program, that has a lot of hiccups and bumps and complications and we know that. We've, we've seen it, there's a lot going on in that program. I think it just speaks very much to your leadership and, and your knowledge and your compassion for the city. And, and I'm not just saying this because I know you also live in Ward Eight, but I just, I, I very much want to thank you for what you've done, for setting us on this path. And, and I look forward to still hearing from you about issues in the city. But, but just really again, thank you for all you've done. Thank you for the compassion that you bring to your position and enjoy retirement.
Thank you.
In whatever busy fashion that it, that looks like for you, but I, thank you very much.
Thanks, Val.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She might be back there, just in case. I will, just, I just want to say one thing more when you talk about that. What will keep me occupied is my grandchildren. But the main reason I want to do and have wanted to do this job, I want my grandkids here. I don't want them going away. I lost two of my kids, you know, to another part of the country. I want my grandkids here. I want them to love and know the community and serve as, and get the joy out of it that I've always gotten, so thank you very much.
Mayor, did you give her the gold watch already?
Is there one in the budget? We have a really tight budget. We have a very tight budget.
Val, don't forget mellow cream.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Should I bring in your donuts, Alderman?
No, no.
I'm just kidding, I'm kidding. No, I know what you're talking about. So now we'll go to, that was old business and new business. Any other council members have anything else they need to speak before we move on? Okay. Seeing none, then we will go to citizens who have signed up to speak to the council. The first person is Tamika Seymour.
Let me start this off right now. I'm gonna try to be patient and not blackout. I got bipolar, PTSD. I've been doing it for a long time. That's why I try to keep myself isolated and away from certain peoples. These last three weeks, I've been going in and out the hospital because I've been sick because I couldn't breathe. Thanks to the police department, thanks to the fire department, did a great job because I couldn't talk, I couldn't do nothing. I'm in my phone, in my bed, rolling around, trying to catch my air and I kept, the dispatch was calling me out on the phone, but I remembered the dispatch got calls. Thanks to some of the aldermen, it's taught me some of them calls. I kept pressing one, letting them know that I'm here. Lucky, I let the police know and I let the fire department know to come to the back door. If they did not come to that door, I'd have been dead. But that's not the story. I don't even want to be in my house. I reached out to related, they answered my questions. Renata did a great job. I walked from Crown Plaza, couldn't breathe, made it up a hand, got there, couldn't breathe. Then I was in here, I was sitting down doing my own business, sitting by myself. Here come a person sitting by me doing meth and I got unresponsive and I couldn't talk. They asked to rush me to the hospital because I'm allergic to drugs. I can't be around no drugs unless my whole body shut down. I shut down completely, period. I get to have a hand after I leave the hospital. This is devastating. They asked me all type of questions. I said, I live a prior life. I don't need to give you my social security. I don't need to give you my doctors. I don't need to give you nothing that. You know what I'm saying? I need help because the fire department, police, ambulance, and the hospital, both were the hospital to say, since you got mold in your house, you cannot be there. You have to find somewhere to go. I go to have a hands. Every, I get a little corner by myself, sitting down there. I get up and walk and use the girl's bathroom. There's only one trans there. She uses men's bathroom, that's not right. I use a girl's bathroom. Come back, Tamika. And I'm seeing women's wear leggings, shirt. You can't wear your T-shirt. I'm fully dressed. You gotta, we gonna give you something. They come back with something I didn't like. You gotta wear your coat. In there. That's stupid. They already knew before bedtime, Ron did a great job. They knew better than drugs told them, put Tamika in the area by herself. They put me in the area with the men's, his own drugs. If I didn't have the medication for the anxiety, dizziness, and allergic to reaction, if I didn't take that, what about if I lay down, went to sleep and did not wake up the next morning? Because I can't breathe fat enough. That's emergency problem that we cannot have in helping hands. When they knew, when I told them that I cannot be around crack, heroin, or fat enough, my body shuts down. I can't stop. I will not breathe, nerves shut down, eyes shut down, and I fall out and go into a coma instantly. But they put my life in jeopardy. We give them funding to help the community. But this is how we get treated? All because I don't do drugs, I can't get help? All because I can't get a voucher? You know, housing, talking about we helped the homeless. That was emergency for me not to be in my house. Now I'm back in my house, knowing I put myself in jeopardy again. Knowing I'm breathing this mold, knowing I can't do it. Then here come Jill. If you don't like it, you leave. Her words is out of her mouth. If you do not like it here, leave. Then they talking about the phones, give them back. I got all my information in my phone, medical records, everything. Anybody can sit up there and go through my phone and get it. Phones is cracked by smart peoples. Kids three years old can crack a phone.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Posey is in the hallway if you want to talk to Ethan, he can help you, Tamika. The next person signed up to speak is Anthony Galloway. Is there an Anthony Galloway here today? Say no. The next person signed up to speak is Tierra Sandage. He's not here either. The next person tonight signed up to speak is Ken Pasha.
Hate to see it. That was a really easy one. I mean, I may have misheard you, but I believe you said it was too complicated for high school kids? Did I hear that correct? I did mock city council in middle school. This isn't high-level rocket science, guys. It's really not. It shouldn't be as complicated as some of these things are made to seem. Not when millions of dollars walk out the door for our city utility that's failed to follow EPA guidelines and upgrade for decades at this point with little to no debate to make those kids come back, what, four weeks in a row for a six to five vote on an easy layup? It's embarrassing. And the things that you guys do miss all the time is deeply frustrating. Did anyone else notice what happened today? They actually accepted Sean Grayson's hold. I hope you as city leaders understand what that means if they hadn't. I hope you guys are grateful to the Massey family for holding back the fires and flames the first time, but nobody owes this city a second time. So I really hope you guys take the time to really consider what you as a council can do to affect the well-being and the mental state of the people within the city. Even as young children like that that are going to leave disappointed, we wonder why they grow up to not get involved in these civic decisions? Because we fail to actually do anything to give them hope in it. Do you guys remember me referencing the sidewalks a couple of weeks ago? Number one reason those kids get stopped by the police? Those are the kids that grow up in this city. I mean, an easy layup would be a sidewalk, right? Forty-two years I walked on my broken sidewalks. I think that's the thing, guys. I really, really strongly encourage you, because I don't like coming here every week. I really don't. And I'm sure you guys don't want to hear from me every week. I'm sure I'd love to sit home on one of my only two nights off a week and not be here, but it honestly feels frustrating because I don't give up. Just know that about me. Like my radio station building burned down, doesn't matter. Somebody objected to my FCC license, didn't matter. I had the police harass me for years, didn't matter, because I'm stubborn and I will get to the goals that I want. And I hope you guys feel the same way, but I'll be honest, an easy layup is pretty easy to make, guys. So I hope as a council, you guys really, really take a lot of consideration to think about the kind of easy layups you could be making. Like when I mentioned, Gail Simpson's mentioned about the bridge of nowhere. Again, Sean, we've talked about this, we've talked about it.
It bothers me.
I know, but I just don't want it to seem like that's a target. But my point on that is, is what are we going to do when they let Grayson out? Because it seems like they really want to. A bunch of activist judges on the appellate court. I mean, we have a Sangamon County Sheriff's Department that, again, and we've talked about this, is in an unincorporated part of the city, which again, easy layup, get that in the city, right, at some point in my lifetime. Like at what point does a city stop treating millions of dollars for CWOP like an easy layup and stop treating Indigenous Peoples' Day like that took four meetings? I mean, I've seen more passion for Lesko's position, which, I mean, is a pretty easy layup, right, as to how that should be handled. More passion there than I've seen for the larger issues that affect the youth that walked out this door disappointed in the process. It's frustrating for me, so I can only imagine how they feel, because they have removed civic lessons from high schools. A lot of those kids don't know how this process works and quite frankly, what they might see on YouTube would be deeply disappointing if I were them, because I hold out hope foolishly and sillyly, because I, guess what I read on Thanksgiving in reference to this council? Somebody's thinking about cooking up another unhoused ordinance. I feel like we should have learned from that the first time, guys. I like going home by this time of night, right? You guys want to be here till midnight again? Put that back on the ballot. Because I promise you, it looks like everybody forgot, but they just know, me and a couple of other people, we got it under control for now, but if you upset the city again by being foolish enough to introduce an unhoused ordinance, even lightly mirrors what Peoria offered and passed recently, I can promise you these meetings will go back to being hours long, hours. I'm going to use my last 20 seconds to call out the cowards that don't show up to this meeting, that email you guys, that call you, that apparently have more worth than the people that show up here and speak directly to your face and tell you what they think. If they don't have the time or the willingness to show up here, then I'm not sure why their thoughts and opinions should matter that much. It's not that hard to take the time. I do it every Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Brianna Roberts.
I'm really glad that Ken mentioned the anti-camping ordinance that was brought back up or is supposedly going to be brought back up, because I have made some mathematical equations for you guys to see how easy it is for a majority of your Springfield citizens to become homeless in a month and a half. So, let's say this woman's name is Sarah and she's a 34-year-old single mother and she makes roughly $43,000 a year, which is the average in Illinois, but that's still more than our minimum wage. After taxes, she makes $2,868 a month. Her rent is $925, her utilities is 200, which is honestly not really realistically what it is for a single mother and a child. Her groceries is 300, which again, I'm really lowballing it there. Transportation is 540 and that includes gas, insurance, car note. And childcare is 880. And just for an example, a standard week roughly, U of I childcare is $248 weekly, okay? So after that, she's in the negative already and that's just basic expenses, working full time, paying all of her stuff on time. One morning, she wakes up and her child is incredibly sick. She has to take her daughter to the hospital and because of that, she misses four days of work. She has to pay for prescription medicine that's not paid for by her insurance and it's $150. So not only is she out of $150, but she's also out of $661 because she missed four days of work. Because of that, she uses her remaining credit card balance to pay for groceries and the $150 that she was charged for her prescription medication is also put on her credit card. Because she missed $661, she now has $2,207 to spend that month on bills. She was already negative when she was working full-time and she's making less than that, $550 or negative $558 left for that month. So because So because of that, she is now short on rent. And because she is short on rent, she has served a $50 late fee. Oh, unfortunately, her car broke down because her car is old, and now she is late on rent. She has a $50 service fee she has to pay her landlord because she is late on rent, and she has to pay 100 or $800 to fix her car. She can't even afford her rent. How is she supposed to afford this magic $800 bill that she just got out of nowhere? She can't. So because of that, she gets served an eviction notice. Her and her toddler lose their housing, they are not able to, or she's not able to continue to work as many hours because she now has unreliable transportation. So not only is she missing work, but she is also getting her hours cut, so she's making less than $2,000 a month. Do you see how hard it is to get back up when you have an unexpected bill? And again, that is when you are making over our state minimum wage. Do you see how easy it is for any average Illinois citizen to become homeless? Now, I don't pocket watch, so I don't want to talk like I know what any of you are getting paid, because I don't. But I know there are a couple of you up there that are making significantly more than $43,000 a year, and this scenario is not necessarily something you have to worry about. Everybody has their own struggles, and again, I'm not trying to say if you make more money, you don't understand the struggle, maybe you worked your way up. That's, that's whatever, that's separate. But what I am trying to stress is that we're backtracking to penalizing homelessness when 90% of the time, it's not their fault. They were never even set up for success in the first place, and now we're telling people that if you miss four days of work, if you miss two days of work, if you miss one paycheck, well, that sucks. You're also going to have to pay the city because you have to live on the streets now, even though you don't want to be there in the first place, and that's just more money on top of the debt that you already owe for the bills that you had to pay for just to survive. So, before this is presented to you guys as an ordinance, I don't care how it is rewritten, I don't care how it is formulated, or what, um, what ways it is made to make this look like this is to rehabilitate the unhoused population. Remember that this could be any one of us, okay? And like Ken said, you want to go home around this time, don't do it, because we will make it another midnight showing, okay? Thank you.
The last person signed up to speak was Alice Fanning, and she is not here this evening, so.
Most adjourned.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. If there's a first nay, I'm assuming.
No nays, sir.